We'll call this meeting to order. And I don't know, Debbie, if you want me to track attendance?
I told her I would do it.
Okay, thank you, Dan. So by my evaluation of this list, Sarah, everybody's here. We've got some tech crew in here. So I think everybody's here. The only discussion item is the screening training presented by Sarah, and you're up as soon as you're ready.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. And board, thank you for having me and OSBA help with this process. We're going to do some training on how to review applications, how to rate the applications, and ultimately how to submit your rankings for your top 10 of the applications. So I think what we should do first is kind of go around the room and introduce ourselves, say a little bit about what your role is with Silver Falls, and then we'll go ahead and introduce.
Oh, okay. I'm Charlie Nealon. I'm a school board member.
Lori McLaughlin, school board member.
Jennifer Schager, school board member.
Jonathan Edmonds, school board member.
Tom Wuchols, school board member.
Dan Bush, Assistant Superintendent, Acting Superintendent.
Jacob Flotter, community member. I'm also a member of the budget committee.
I'm Rondu, Vice President of Classified Association, and also groundskeeper for the school district.
Thank you. That's the Roach, Principal at Robert Frost Elementary.
Sheri Thompson, first grade teacher at U Creek.
Annie Shucker, drop-off convention coordinator at the high school.
Lisa Kenzie, secretary at North Point Elementary School.
Maddie Traver, I'm a SCAN TV manager and tech support.
And on the phone, we've got, I think, four folks.
Yeah, go ahead and we'll all call you out. So Debbie, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Debbie Vallop, Board and Superintendent Secretary.
Great. And next we have Inez. I hope I'm saying that right.
Yeah, yeah, you're fine. I respond to all kinds of names. It's fine. Inez Bradford, just community member and parent of three kids in the district.
Wow, great. Thank you. Janet?
Yes, hi. Janet Allenak, also a school board member. While I have you, I wonder if you, Sarah, might move a little bit closer to the microphone. It's very hard to hear you. I don't know if the other people on the phone are also.
I agree. I agree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, that's great feedback. Thank you. And then Erv?
Yep. Erv Stadley, school board member.
Great. Well, thank you for joining us on the phone. And screening committee members, thank you for participating, for coming out on your time off to be a part of this process with the school board. I know your feedback, your input, is very important to them, and it's going to be invaluable. So thank you for that. So I need to hand out some folders. So please bear with me as I may not remember everybody's names. Jacob, right? What's wrong?
Thank you.
Lisa. Lori. Uh, Leslie. Annie. Sheri. And Jennifer. All right. Those of you on the phone, you have orders to connect with Dan at the district office to receive your folder materials and your jump drive. I'll explain the jump drive in a little bit. So my computer is all the way over there, and I was gonna kind of scroll through. I don't know, is there a way to move it all the way back here?
Um, let me see how far the cable goes.
Or maybe I could just use my mouse. I wonder if the signal's that far.
I'm sure the mouse will go that far. I can also put it on like completely just on one screen so you don't have to scroll.
Well, I think this is fine. Okay. All right. So if you would all open your folder, and those on the phone, go ahead and open that file I emailed you. So the first thing we have in there is what we call an electronic flyer. We used to, for superintendent positions, create and print a beautiful brochure that we would mail out to candidates. But being the digital age, we've gone into this process where we still create something beautiful, but it's all electronic. And it gets emailed directly to about 25,000 potential candidates. Western states, middle states, some farther states, and specific people who've reached out to our partner, Greg McKenzie of Next Up Leadership, and said, hey, I want to come to Oregon. Put me on your email list. So it's got information about the district, about your community, about the position. We get photos from the, with the help of the board secretary to put into these marketing materials to really let, you know, Silver Falls School District come through and shine in this electronic flyer. So I put that in there just so that everyone can see what we've sent out and what's one of the aspects of our marketing campaign for this position. Then we have the search calendar. And you'll see tonight, July 17th, we're going to do some training. I'll show you how to access the jump drive where the applications are, and you will screen those on your own time. And use what's called a ratings sheet, like a worksheet that I've provided. It's at the back of your folder. You'll use that for each of the applications. And then at the very end, after we go into and come out of executive session, the board will have a couple minutes to talk about contract parameters. And that's what we'll be doing tonight. Our next meeting, we'll all come back together. And screening committee members, you're invited. Invited. You're invited to join in as well because there's more opportunity to provide your input and feedback. We'll come back and we'll look at how the board ranked all of the candidates, how the screening committee ranked all the candidates, and what that looks like combined. And then we'll get feedback from the screening committee, and then you'll be released. And the board will stay and deliberate on who they want to invite for interviews. And that's the next meeting. After that, the board will conduct reference checks, telephone reference checks, because this is an interim superintendent position. We have such a short timeline. There's not an opportunity for the board to go and visit other districts where these candidates currently work and do some more behind-the-scenes sort of investigating, for lack of a better word. So we rely heavily on the reference checks, the telephone calls, and we'll train you on how that whole process will go. And then we'll have our interviews. And then after the last interview, the board will deliberate, identify a top candidate, move on to contract negotiation with a plan to come back on August 5th and vote to approve the contract with the new interim superintendent. So that's our search. All right. So the next item in your packet is confidentiality agreement. When we go into executive session, it is to discuss candidates. Tonight, for the first time, you'll see who the candidates are. We have 21, I believe it was, 21 applicants for this position. Now, what that means is you have 21 files to go through. But you have not quite a full week to do that. You've got the weekend coming up. And it is a lot of work, but it's very, very important work. So again, thank you for giving your time for that. Everything that you will see, everything that you will discuss in executive session needs to be kept confidential. Every aspect of this process needs to be kept strictly confidential. So while you can see who else is on the screening committee, you'll know that you've all signed a confidentiality agreement. You cannot discuss anything outside of executive session with each other. You know, you can't call them up and say, hey, did you see Candidate B's application? What's going on there? Big, big no-no. And if people know, you know, outside of this room, oh, you're on the screening committee. What's that like? All you can really say is, yes, I'm on the screening committee. It's a lot of work. And that's kind of all you can say. You can reveal the number of applicants received, but you cannot indicate in any way who they are. And if there are names on the list that you know, you know the person, you can't really talk to them about it. If they call you up, and they shouldn't because they know all these things, you can't, you just can't discuss it. And when we get to reviewing the, how to screen the application and how to rank them and rate them and all of that, if you do know a candidate, you really need to just focus on the materials you have in front of you, what they have submitted, not what you know of the person or what you've heard of the person. What you're going to be basing your opinions on is what they've submitted only at this point. Okay? All right. So before we go into executive session, I need a signed confidentiality agreement from everybody. And you can fill that out now. I will collect them right before executive session. You will have another copy of this in your envelope where your jump drives are. So you'll be able to see what's in there if you feel so inclined. And, oh, thank you. I was just gonna say, I'm not sure if we have any other pens or things. I think what I'll do is we'll stay in. Okay. All right. We're gonna go on to the next sheet, which is screening do's and don'ts. So one thing that we've done is kind of created this sort of like a tip sheet of the important things to think about and do while you're screening an application, and the important things to not think about and to not do. And obviously discrimination, that's a big one. It's pretty common sense. I'm just gonna highlight some of the things. Don't discriminate for age, gender, marital status, race, national origin, religion, disability, sexual orientation. Meanwhile, you probably aren't going to have a lot of that information in the application packet, but we also want to make sure we've said it, we all know it. It's not a good thing to do. What we do want you to do is read every application carefully and read it with the same lens. And I'll show you again that rating worksheet we'll get to at the end outlines what things to kind of look for. And if you're gonna look at one application and rate it really high because this candidate has A, B, and C, and the next candidate also has A, B, and C, you'll want to treat them the same way in that terms. Be consistent, essentially. We want current letters of reference. But one thing to note, with interim searches, some of your candidates are going to be retired. They may not have a letter of reference from 2019. In a permanent search, that's much more important. But in this interim search, you're more looking for the quality of the letter as opposed to, is it super, super recent? Keep an open mind. You have some out-of-state applicants. And in an interim situation, most districts will look for someone with Oregon experience. But we don't want to just completely discount the out-of-state folks because they could be great. So look at all their qualifications and not discount them simply because like, oh, they've never even been in Oregon. And as you go down the list, we've got some questions to ask yourself, some things to kind of keep in your mind as you're going through. And I'll let you guys read those. But this highlighted thing right here, don't contact candidates or references. I mean, I don't believe that you guys would do that because you have actually no time to do that while you're reviewing these 21 applications. But it's very important not to reach out to anyone for confidentiality reasons. But also, do not do internet searches on these candidates. Don't Google them. Don't look them up on Facebook. We want you to base your opinion strictly on the materials that you have. All right. So we're gonna move on to the sample job application packet. So we put this together to kind of give you an idea of what you're going to be looking at. Because you're going to be doing all of this on your own, this kind of gives you an idea of what to expect. So every application has the same application form. And it's very basic information, contact information, education, employment history. And then there are several questions that we ask for, you know, kind of legal reasons, background reasons, things like that. So on this first page of the application form, you're gonna see three areas for employment. So that's where the candidate should be placing their most recent three places of employment. I am gonna go over some specific things to look for in the employment history, but I'm going to do that when we get to the resume. So just know employment. Next, we have some specific questions that are really more important for Steve and I in terms of, you know, kind of doing a background look at their license and where they are in their contract. You're, you might be interested in, what is the reason for leaving your last position or wanting to leave your current position? And again, this is going to be more important in the permanent search. Here, you, again, you'll have a lot of retired folks that just want to help school districts out, and they've got the experience and the background to come in and do it. So they may be currently retired. So in the permanent search, what you'll want to see, okay, you're a current superintendent of a school district, and you've been there for three years or something. Why do you want to leave? We want to hear, why are you looking for somewhere? And then we ask, you know, are you licensed in Oregon? If you're not, are you eligible to be licensed in Oregon? And then, did you list all of your places of employment? Next, we have veterans' preference. So by law, if a person is a veteran or a disabled veteran, we have to give them preference through this process at every step. This, again, is more important for Steve and I to make sure and work with the board that we are applying that preference as is appropriate. I have indicated the veterans in your candidate pool. And when we get to the candidate summary sheet, I can highlight who they are. But just know that Steve and I will make sure that we're addressing that. You don't necessarily want to take it into account when you rank them just because they're a veteran. They wouldn't necessarily get a higher ranking. We'll apply it at the end of that, if that makes sense. Next, we have a series of questions. I think 12 questions. And the ideal answer to these first 12 questions is a no. Our example here, we've highlighted number two because this candidate, this hypothetical candidate, put a yes. Are you currently the subject of an inquiry, review, or investigation for alleged misconduct or alleged violation of professional standards of conduct? It's a pretty important thing to know. If they put a yes to any of these 12 questions, they are supposed to supply an explanation at the end of the application. It can come on the application form itself or an additional page right after the application. And I will show you this person. So explanation, just a second. These three questions should all be yeses. Consent and authorizations. I give you my information. You're free to do a background check. You're free to contact my references. And acknowledgements, these should all be yeses as well. I've provided you accurate and complete information. All of that stuff. So at the end here, we've highlighted, "In 2016, a complaint was filed with the Teachers Standards and Practices Commission alleging that I assigned a staff member to teach a subject outside of their endorsement area." And that is why this person put a yes to number two. So if there are any yeses, doesn't mean completely discount the applicant. It means look into it a little bit more, look at their explanation, and then you kind of have to gauge what that means to you and incorporate that into your overall ranking of the candidates. Many of you, if not all of you, will know that any person can make a complaint to TSBC for any reason, and TSBC must investigate it. Also, they don't always have the manpower they need to do these investigations, and there could be some really old stuff on there. Something else to know is that I have looked on TSBC's sanction list for all of your applicants. No one is on it. But that doesn't mean they never were. All right. So next, we have a sample resume. Everyone's resume is going to look a little different. This was just sort of a basic one that we created to show the point we want to make, essentially. And again, this isn't necessarily super important for the interim search. I feel it is much more important for the permanent search because for a permanent search, you're looking for longevity. And for the interim search, you're looking at one year. We need someone who can come in and do what we need done and be very effective and right for Silver Falls right now for one year. But on the resume, we've highlighted some information. This hypothetical candidate was a superintendent at Cascade School District where there's an ADM of 2,250. ADM is average daily matriculation, which is basically student attendance. They left in April of 2002, before the school year ended, as a superintendent. They left. They then went into owning their own consulting firm for a couple of years, not immediately back into work at a school district. Then when they did go back, they became an elementary principal at a district with an ADM of 85. So that's not the normal trajectory you see for someone of a superintendent. They did eventually get back up to being a superintendent, but it was a superintendent principal, again, at a district with a small ADM. So just like with the yeses and the nos, this isn't something that if you see, you want to just say, well, I don't want that candidate. It means I've got a red flag. I want some more information. I'm gonna weigh this in with my rankings. All right. So that's the resume. Every application will have a letter of interest, a cover letter of interest. And we've given you two samples, one that we deemed marginal and the other one we've deemed strong. So I'm just gonna go through the marginal one real quick. There's not a ton of detail. There's not really a connection to the district or the community. There's no real emphasis on why this candidate would be a good fit or effective even. In the highlighted section, they talk about an achievement, but they don't explain how they did it. There's no, again, there's no detail. There's nothing measurable there. In the next cover letter, there's much more detail. For one thing, it's longer, which you're not necessarily looking for a long cover letter, but in our examples, it shows there's more thought and effort put into it. It talks about the community. It talks about how they achieved their achievement. And just overall, it's more detailed. So those are the kind of things you want to look at in a cover letter. Each of these files will have a minimum of three letters of reference. In this application process, we ask for three letters of reference, and some candidates will submit more. We try to keep it down to three because we know this is a lot of stuff to go through on a short amount of time. But if they submit more, I give you more. You have, you are receiving all of the files and all of the material that we have received for this position. So this letter of reference is what we would consider a strong letter of reference. It's very good. There's a lot of positive emphasis here. We've highlighted the words and phrases that we thought illustrated that. Most importantly, I cannot think of a person who would be a better candidate for any superintendency. Strong, positive. I already said positive, but. In letters of reference, you want to read for tone. And in some cases, you kind of have to read between the lines because you could be asked to write a letter of reference for an individual that you didn't necessarily agree was a good employee, a good worker, a good candidate. But you're gonna probably write them a letter of reference because it's the nice thing to do. And it's going to be a nice letter of reference. It's not gonna say, don't hire this person. So, but it might be a little bland. There may not be, again, any detail. And it might have some things in it like going down here. If you have any further questions, you can reach me at, and then their phone number, which kind of begs you to go, I want to call this person and let them verbally tell me what they really think versus what they're willing to put down on paper. So again, reading for tone, reading for between the lines, and how much real great stuff is in the letter. Does it kind of give you a, or does it make you go like, oh, yes, this person, likes this person. They would hire them. They would hire them again. They're sad to see them go. So that's letters of reference. And next, we have the ratings sheet or the worksheet, if you will. You have one of these for every file on the jump drive. And this is for you to make notes on, to keep track of these applicants because when we come back and go over all the rankings and you want to talk about various candidates, you're not going to have your computer and their file in front of you. You're going to have these sheets. So that's what these are for. I'm not gonna go through them and grade them. I'm not actually really gonna look at them. I will keep them because by law, we have to keep all of our paperwork here, but this is really for you. It's for you to, again, keep track. So as you can see, there's a lot of information at the top that's all kind of found on that first page of the application form. And then we have the qualifications section. And this is kind of the key section. So the board adopted qualities and qualifications for the interim superintendent position. And each of those qualities and qualifications is here on this sheet. And so you can sort of measure each candidate against each of those qualities and qualifications. And you can kind of give them a grade, one, two, three, four, or not applicable. And then at the end, you can give them an overall grade based on all of that. Then there's a section to kind of keep track of their letters of reference. Do they have one from an immediate supervisor? Do they have one from board members, from coworkers? What do you think of the qualities, in a sense, of the letters of recommendation? And then we have just kind of like some notes sections. Some applicants will highlight awards they've won or community things that they are involved in. This is a section for you to put anything of note down, or you could just use it for your own notes. At the end, I recommend this candidate for an interview. Yes, no, maybe. That'll be helpful when you go to do your rankings. So I believe I set it for 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. With the exception of the four on the phone, everyone in this room minus the IT folk will get an email from me through OSBAsearches.org. And it's a survey on ranking your top 10 candidates. It's very, very simple. You have 10 questions. There's a little drop-down menu. And for number one, you're gonna pick your number one candidate out of all the candidates. And you'll just highlight their name, go down to number two, your number two candidate. And we find the easiest way to come up with your top 10 is to take your ratings sheets and put them into three columns. Yeses, nos, and maybes. If you've got 10 yeses, rate them. If you've got more than 10 yeses, well, then you're gonna have a little tricky time. If you don't have 10 yeses, then pull in your maybes. And if you don't have enough, if you don't have 10 between your yeses and your maybes, you're gonna have to put some nos down. But that's okay because you're just saying, in your opinion, this is the, this is the order for these folks. It doesn't mean, if you rank someone, it doesn't mean that they're gonna be the interim superintendent or that they will even get an interview. It's just a way for the board to see how everyone sort of lines up, all the thoughts. It gives us an opportunity to have some targeted discussions when we meet again. Okay? So 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, if you don't receive the email, make sure to check your junk mail. These emails tend to go into that folder a lot. If you still don't find it, email me. I would say call me, but I'm gonna be on the rug. OSBA has a conference this weekend that Steve and I and my department are kind of in charge of. So we'll be there, but I will be available via email. And there's plenty of time between now and when it's due, which is Monday at 8:00 p.m. Okay? So we've got plenty of time to sit. So we've got plenty of time to submit your rankings. Those of you on the phone, once I get your signed confidentiality agreement, I'll shoot that email off to you and then you will have that survey. Any questions? I know we went through a lot of stuff.
You made a specific point to suggest that we should look only at the materials that's in here. Is that only at the, this current ranking process, or at any point are we going to evaluate news articles or other information on these candidates?
Yeah, great question. For this stage of the process, we are only looking at the application materials and rating the candidates based on their application materials. The next step will be, once we've identified who the board would like to have interviewed, Steve and I will do the internet checks, if you will, on those candidates. We will provide you any pertinent information, newspaper articles, things like that. At that point, we will have a deliberation, and if there is direct knowledge, direct experience with a candidate that someone feels is important to share, that can be shared at that time. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to gather up the confidentiality agreements, and fortunately, those on the phone, go ahead and stay on the phone, we're not gonna talk about any names we see up on the screen or on paper. That way, they can stay on the phone, because they don't have the signed confidentiality agreement, we can't use the names yet, but alright. I have 12 of these. Alright, so Board Chair, if you'd like to take us into executive session.
Okay. Well, at this point, we will adjourn to executive session under ORS 192.6602A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Yep, we'll return to regular open session. And discussion item is contract parameters.
Yes, so this, and just a little side note, I'm gonna hand out my business card, it's got my email, it's got my direct phone on it, I won't be back in the office until next Wednesday, but again, my email is still good. So this is a time for the board to discuss contract parameters in preparation of identifying a top candidate and moving forward on negotiations. And you will want to also, as a board, identify a board member to manage those contract negotiations. And that doesn't necessarily have to happen tonight, but just now, you'll need to do that before you go into negotiations. So, Board, please discuss.
Right, I'm just gonna take this quick note, and then we can... Okay, so I guess coming into this, I'll say right off the top, I'm not even sure what all the contract parameters ought to be, I know that there are unquestionably things like salary and start, I mean, all those sort of general things. I guess, Sarah, I'd be looking to you, it sort of said presenter, Sarah, I thought you were maybe gonna present some things here, so I was sort of assuming that was the case.
Sure, sure, yeah. So we tend to kinda take a backseat, if you will, on the contract part, because it should go, you should have your contract reviewed by your district lawyer.
Right.
There's kind of, so we work for school boards, but we also work with superintendents, and that's why we kinda take a step back from this, but what you should do is review your current contract, have every board member look at it and see, are there any, is there anything in there we don't like, is there something there or not there that we want in there? Talk about that, and then we would recommend having your district attorney look it over as well. And some boards will just send it straight to their district attorney, some will look it over first, it's kinda up to you how you want to...
No, that helps me understand the parameters of what the idea here was.
Start with the current one.
Start with the current one.
Right, yeah. And probably, that's probably a good place to start, modify it for the interim position as needed.
So can we ask Dan to pull that for us?
I think I might even have one here, but that'd be great, actually, if we could have one handy. I believe that I probably have it from a recent... I think it's right here. But I don't have it for certain if this is the actual or the proposed. I'm double checking. Now, this is three years. Yeah, I believe that this is actually the current one. Would you guys like a copy of this so that we can...
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then you'll probably want to maybe email it to the board members who aren't here tonight, or they can pick up a copy with their material, their screening committee materials.
It's also available on our board book. It's in board book and it's in, the contract, I think it's out on the policy page, is it not? I believe it is.
Contract is a public document, so it is...
Yeah, it's out there somewhere.
But yeah, it'll be handy just to be able to look at something while we're talking.
And when do we, when should we have that settled for, by the next meeting probably, or during the next meeting, by the end of the next meeting?
You can take, you know, essentially consider it homework, take it home, and then we will discuss contract parameters again at our next meeting. What you just need to make sure you have enough time for is for the attorney to look it over and for any changes to be made, you know, in time for, essentially, at the end of your last interview, we'll get the final feedback from the screening committee, the board will move into deliberations. Once a top candidate is identified, you're gonna move really, really fast. So by that point, you'll want a solid contract.
And that's not something that we could do any, any other time besides a public meeting, so we've gotta maybe look at it tonight.
Yeah, no, I think we oughta look at it, talk about it, talk about things that we might've noticed before or cared about before but never...
And have it settled by the end of the next meeting, is that...
Well, it sounds like.
Well, it seems to me like we might need to have it settled tonight.
If that works out.
Is that what I am thinking?
Well, we need to have a review.
Look at our timeframe, right, yeah, so it all kinda depends on how much time you have to have it reviewed. We don't necessarily have to have it finalized this evening, there's certainly an opportunity to talk about it as a board tonight, and there will be another opportunity to talk about it as a board at our next meeting. We just need to make sure there's enough time between when you guys decide, okay, we've got what we want in there, let's send it to the attorney, for them, for the attorney to then give it back to the board.
Okay.
I think that the two board members on the phone, I would like, they're not gonna have a copy of this tonight.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice to have their input.
I plan on actually reading some sections as we go to, and that may facilitate conversation.
And if the people on the phone, if they have their phones, they can look it up on board book.
Okay, I'm thinking if we just quickly go through the main sections, some of them are rather boilerplate and some of them probably have more meat, so, you know, if we were to just walk through it, maybe section by section, we might be able to blast through it pretty quickly just talking about it. And, you know, the initial paragraph is an introduction, it talks about, you know, the date at which it begins and for whom it applies to between the district and the superintendent. I don't imagine there's anything too concerning there. Term of employment, again, I believe three years is considered the maximum by state law, is that correct? That's why they are three years almost always across the board. They are not required, as I understand it, to be three years, but they are typically...
But wouldn't we reduce it because of...
We would, for interim, for sure.
So we would say one year?
It would have to be, I think.
And it wouldn't, yeah, it won't be a full 12 months typically, the interim will go until the end of June.
Probably June of the following year, yeah. Yeah, June 30th, 2020, I guess.
We'd have to have a different pen that's in date. Does that detail come a little bit later when it's finalized?
Yeah, I think it's probably flexible because it depends on the availability of the...
Right, and I would guess that the, you know, it could even possibly be something that's, you know, left as a blank and manually filled in at the time of signing. Okay, section two is duties and responsibilities, and this would be the section or one of them, you know, that might be up for discussion. There's a lot here. Superintendent shall be the chief executive officer of the district. As such, the superintendent shall have the primary responsibility for execution of the district's board policies, whereas the board shall retain primary responsibility for formulating and adopting said policies. He shall, in this case, it says he, but I would assume it's he, she, shall, direct and assign the staff of the district, shall organize, reorganize, and arrange the administrative and supervisory staffs as best serve the district, shall select all personnel subject to the approval of the board, shall suggest policy, regulations, rules, procedures deemed necessary for the well-doing of the district, and in general, perform all duties incident to the office of the superintendent and such other duties as may be specified and/or delegated by the board. Parties agree individually and collectively not to interfere with nor usurp the primary responsibilities of the other party. Any questions or concerns with that? Summarize if they're gonna be the superintendent, act like the superintendent, you know, yeah. Okay, the board collectively and individually through their directors shall promptly refer all criticism, complaints, and suggestions called to its attention to the superintendent for study and recommendation. The superintendent shall have the right to attend all board meetings except executive sessions held to discuss the superintendent's employment status and all board and citizen committee meetings. He shall serve as ex officio member of all board committees and provide administrative recommendations on each item of business considered by these groups.
Just the he part.
Right, yeah. I think that the first sentence, "The board collectively and individually through their directors shall promptly refer all criticism, complaints, and suggestions called to its attention to the superintendent for study and recommendation," I think that, I wanted to make sure I understand what we all think that means, right? The word refer, in my view, is implying that the board would be, you know, let's say we received something, a citizen complaint, I don't know, and we basically say, "Here, superintendent, what do you think?" Is that how you read this? Or, I'm just curious what you guys think of that, it seems like...
Well, I think sometimes it might not necessarily be what you think, it's just this is the conversation I had with this individual, I'm sharing this with you so that you can either take further action or just know about it.
Right. I entirely agree that the superintendent should need to know about all criticism, complaints, and suggestions. That makes sense. The word refer implies a handoff, and I'm curious if that's the correct...
That's how I'm reading it.
And I don't know if that's...
It's more of a handoff than just providing information, but almost saying, "Could you take care of this?"
And I think in most cases, that probably makes sense.
And I would like to know if that's appropriate or not, you know?
So you wanna check with your policies, see what's in the policies, and then when, my personal recommendation would be then when you hand this over to the attorney and saying, "So, you know, we have some questions about this, should we put as is appropriate per policy or something like that?" And the attorney will have a better idea of how to address that.
If I could add, I would also add that the latter part of the sentence, because I think the handoff analogy is a good one, is to the superintendent for study and recommendation. So the handoff is then there's gonna be some kind of circling back.
Right.
Because there's gonna be a study and a recommendation regarding, you know, criticism, complaint, or suggestion.
Right, that's a good add, and I think, I think I would just appreciate making sure that I knew something was coming back and if appropriate, that the board had the opportunity then to not violate contract while acting on something, so... Anybody on the phone with any additional? I know it's harder with me just reading it out loud.
I know, I'm looking at it too, and I guess, this is Janet, I would wanna know whether that was standard in most contracts. I guess that would make me, help me to feel better about it if it were deemed to be pretty normal language, because I would also be concerned that we would then be sort of bound to refer the contents of all conversations we have with all community members about every issue to the superintendent, even if it was just, didn't really merit following up, you know, and I understand the intention of having this there, and I appreciate and respect that intention, but I also would wanna maybe get a little bit more input about the wording of it so that, so that we aren't always sort of walking the fine line of trying to decide what to do. Does that make sense? It feels, it feels like a really big thing, and maybe it's not, maybe I'm overthinking it, but I just wanna make sure that we're comfortable, you know, complying with and with whatever this requires of the board.
Well, I think that we're reading into it... Oh, sorry, Janet. This is her, I think we're reading into it too much, that is not the board's responsibility, that's the superintendent's, and we don't need to take on any more responsibility. I like it the way it is.
I mean, there could be a, I think that some of the, I think what Jan's concern is, is that every concern has to be, I think the purpose of that sentence is to make sure that if somebody criticizes or complains or has a valid criticism, a real, hey, I'm complaining about the school district, not just, you know, grousing to grouse like people like to shoot debris, but if they're really given a valid criticism and a valid complaint, it needs to be sent to the superintendent so they can act on it, because the last thing you want is to have people criticize, giving a criticism or a criticism or anything to the board, and if it doesn't get to the superintendent, how's the superintendent supposed to act? That, that's the, he did, that's, that's so the superintendent doesn't get blindsided by something, it's like, "I didn't know," you know, you don't, you don't want something coming their way and the superintendent didn't know, how are they, how are they supposed to deal with it? So I think that's the purpose of that sentence, is I don't think every conversation that we have out there has to be reported, but I think we have to use our own discretion. It's like, hey, here's someone giving an official complaint about the school district or an official suggestion, that's, you know, we have to use our own, our own discretion. And maybe there's a way to add a more clarifying word in there or something, but that's the purpose of that, so that the superintendent doesn't get blinded.
Thanks, Tom, that was a good summary, yeah, that's exactly what I mean, is I agree with the intent of it and wanted to be able to support that, and so maybe we just need to think about the wording, but we don't, we don't necessarily have to do that, maybe we can think about it and come back next Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the points, every time someone is, Tom, what you said was excellent, Jonathan, I mean, and then, you know, Dan, what you said was, your...
I mean, and then, you know, Dan, what you said was, your interpretation was, yes, I'll take a look at it, but I can also make these recommendations and give it back to the board. So the word circulatory, I think, really needs to be implied, so we don't always feel like we're walking on that thin ice and, you know, what does suggest that conversation where we have to extend it to Dan?
So it sounds like a little bit of.
I would like that clarity personally, so it's not becoming.
Right.
Either too often or not enough, or someone feels like, oh, why didn't you mention something? I would like that clarity, at least with the board, and how we can work and keep the communication open.
Well, maybe we can just kind of.
What it boils down to is trusting your administration. If you don't trust them, there isn't anything in that contract that you can't pick apart. So we've got to pick the best candidate that everybody trusts, and end of story. Because that's where this bottom line, this wording, is because of mistrust.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a fair point.
Yeah, maybe we can just wordsmith it a little bit over the week and offer some suggestions from, for next Wednesday, if anybody has some suggestions.
I like that idea.
Let's just.
I think we're, I think we're all sort of saying it's either close.
Yeah.
Or in Herb's case, perfect, and we can. No, I mean, I'm just being serious, right? I think.
I'm not saying it's perfect, Jonathan, at all, but I'm just saying, I want to caution you, Jonathan, don't start picking every word apart because you are going to end up with nothing.
Fair enough.
Okay.
The, the next section is titled compensation. It has a handful of sections. They'll go pretty quickly. Under salary, of course, that'll be negotiated, I would presume, with the individual. There's a couple of things in here that are worth talking about. It states, "The salary for subsequent contract years shall be in a sum to be mutually determined by the superintendent and the board. However, that salary shall be no less than the previous year. The superintendent may request that a portion of his or her tax or salary be placed in a tax sheltered annuity." There are, by my looking at it, two things that I would bring up as questions, and I'm open to other ideas. One, I don't understand why we would put a step designation under the salary. The salary is to be determined between the board and superintendent, and steps are somewhat irrelevant, I would argue, in that context. So that's just my opinion.
I agree.
Okay.
And then also the idea of salary shall be no less than the previous year. We have talked, talked about at the last meeting that, you know, should the interim become permanent, which may or may not happen, who knows, that then that's, the salary is totally, it's like, we start from scratch at that point.
I would think, yeah.
So I would not want to include that, probably.
It would seem unnecessary to me, but I don't know if a superintendent would feel that way.
Cool, it's something to ask the attorney about, I suppose.
And last part for me is this question of the tax sheltered annuity. Actually, that surprised me when I saw it the first time earlier in the year. I'm just curious if that is standard as well. I have no idea, but it seemed odd to me.
I have no idea.
Anybody have any thoughts or concerns on that?
I don't fully understand it. I know I've seen it on a list of wages where a lot of, a lot of superintendents do that. I don't understand the, how it works and what the savings are, or I don't understand how it benefits the superintendent, or if it's a benefit or a, or a, or a, or if there's a cost to the district. I don't, but I, but I do see it calling whenever I see a list of wages.
We could bounce it off our attorney, too.
What does that mean? Yeah.
You know, what does that mean? And is this, in this case, is that something that we would need to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a cost to the district? Yeah, that's my question.
Right.
Okay. I think it's a good question to ask. Under vacations, they list off 10 paid holidays. I won't list them all off. And 25 days of paid annual vacation, so five weeks, as it were, of vacation plus 10 holidays. And talks about accruing, but not more than, basically, it looks like you can't carry over more than 10 days, so maximum of 35 in any given contract year. Anybody have any concerns with holiday, the five weeks, or the carryover?
The 25 days in this contract is based on the idea that the person worked an entire year, and that's not going to be the case?
That's a catch.
I don't know if that matters or not, but.
I would also add the month that they would be most likely to take time off to. I mean, July would be a month.
That most of those days.
That, so some of those days are gonna come out of for sure.
Right.
So.
I thought there was something in our policy that mentioned that there wouldn't be time, you couldn't take a lot of time off in the spring, like at the end of the school year. I could be wrong on that, but for some reason I read that somewhere. Maybe that was for licensed staff.
Is it?
But maybe it's not. Is that correct? Okay. Yeah, so I think there was something in our policy where licensed staff can't take off, you know, like at the end of the year, you know, like the last two months or something. I don't know the specific language that's in there. So maybe we should look that up.
Is there current guidelines or policy for admins that you know about, Dan? Well, I don't think that principals, except for the high school principal, have vacation days. They have what's considered non-contract days during this window that we're in right now. And I'm kind of.
It was our new contract that you just approved, just approved for the first time ever, but it has to have two personal days. There was, we could never take any specific time previously. So there's nothing that governs, there's no policy that governs how much time we take off, or, I mean, or the day, the specific time of year days, or we didn't have, we didn't have time to.
So I think that the, so you may be, I don't know what the high school contract is, because the high school principal does, is a year-round employee with vacation days. And I don't know if there's specific limits to the end of the year. And I think that there are personal leave limits to, we're talking the very end of the school year type of thing, where.
Like you can't take your personal leave, it's brain break.
Yes, correct, yeah, those kind of limits.
It's approved for your administrator, and you can have, we administrators can deny after a certain number of absences are approved and.
Okay, so I think maybe that's what I'm referring to. And that's good clarification. Yes, okay, okay. Thank you for contributing that.
So, so I want to make a suggestion that, that if it sounds like we're good with it, we just prorate it based on whatever the contract is? If nobody has any other specific concerns?
No, that sounds appropriate.
Sick leave describes basically accumulation as provided by Oregon law. Well, okay. That sounds reasonably straightforward. Okay. Benefits, the district shall pay the employer contribution to PERS. The district shall pay the amount bargained with the licensed association per month for the eligible high deductible plan for family medical dental. Basically saying whatever the licensed folks have bargained is what the superintendent will pay. Superintendent has the option of an HSA, Health Savings Account, provided with an eligible health insurance plan. Again, standard. District agrees to pay any administrative fees charged by the institution that administers the HSA. I would say that's also very standard. The district shall pay the employee's 6% contribution to PERS and the Oregon Public Service Retirement Plan. Should action be taken by the state legislature or any other source of law to eliminate the employee PERS contribution, and therefore, the district is no longer able to contribute the 6% PERS pickup, the district shall increase the salary paid to the superintendent to an amount no greater than 6% that will be cost neutral to the district after all payroll taxes are taken care of. So basically, we're doing the 6% pickup. Should the 6% pickup be eliminated, they will be compensated accordingly.
And all of that language applies even after the rule change?
That's for retirees. So there's probably, depending on our applicant pool, some.
The retirees.
Got it. Because I was, in my head, thinking retire, got it?
It will depend, and I would argue that this section will almost unquestionably need to be amended should it be retired.
Okay.
Does that work for you guys? Anybody on the phone with any questions on this or concerns?
No. The, the language is a little kind of drawn out, so I guess, I mean, I, yeah, I think we just need to, like you said, just sort of pay attention to that, maybe moving forward. I'm not sure how it was written or, or whether it's tight enough, but we can, we can worry about that later, I think.
Yeah. I mean, there's basically three elements to that whole big long thing, which is that we're going to allow them the same health insurance cost with licensed staff, that the district will pay for the administration of the HSA, and that they'll be eligible for it, and then we'll do the 6% pickup. That's how I read that.
Right.
Section E, meritorious service. The superintendent shall be eligible for recognition for meritorious service under the same guidelines and limitations established for other Silver Falls district administrators. And meritorious service would be length of time. So had you served for, let's say, 10, 15, 20, some big milestone year, you would receive a, an amount based on your salary, percentage, you know, 1, 1.5, 2%, whatever the numbers were on the table. I guess this wouldn't apply at all to any interim superintendent.
I would say it only just applies.
I'd be perfectly fine striking that. Anybody see any, I mean, clearly.
It wouldn't apply.
There's like, we got 10 years before that's really a problem, so.
So that's a string? Yeah.
Okay. Performance goals. Annually, not later than September 1, the district shall, in consultation with the superintendent, establish general goals and specific objectives for the ensuing year. They shall be reduced to writing and be among the criteria for evaluation of the superintendent. Feel like that's reasonable and straightforward? Performance, the board shall, in executive session, evaluate and assess in writing the performance of the superintendent at least one time per year, and in any event, no later than July 1 annually during the term of this contract. The evaluation shall be made in reference to the position description of the superintendent and the goals and objectives shall be established for the superintendent for the year in question. The purposes of evaluation are to improve administrative leadership, maintain open lines of communication, and to enhance relations between the board and the superintendent. The superintendent shall be entitled to meet with the board to review its evaluation and display any information that he or she may deem pertinent. The board shall prepare a written document for public disclosure which accurately reflects the character of the superintendent's evaluation. Now, this one came up recently in public meeting. There was some question about the last sentence. The board shall prepare a written document for public disclosure which accurately reflects the character of superintendent's evaluation. That's sufficiently vague that it generated some concern from some members of the community. I would argue it is more vague than I would be comfortable with, and I'm curious what other people think with regard to possible modifications to that last sentence.
Well, it's not in policy, to my knowledge. I don't think that, that that's from our end, that we need to do that based on policy.
Any other thoughts on this one?
No question is policy as well. And then, are you not for sure that it's?
Well, I wouldn't say for sure, but I did read all of the superintendent policies that I could find, and there was nothing that governed that from our end. The reason why we were doing that was because it was in the contract.
Right.
Okay, good.
Would you guys prefer that that not occur, or would you prefer that it occur? And if so, I think we ought to talk about what it looks like.
Well, like, Jennifer, I mean, are you saying that maybe that should be guided by policy?
I'm saying that policy is silent on it.
Right. So, but if we're, are you arguing that we should, policy should guide us on that? So if that's the case, we need to make a policy before we.
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that we don't have to have it because it's not in our policy.
I think we should have it, but it's fine in here. I like it in the contract.
And, and so talk about why you like it.
Good. It's nice to have a written document for the public. I mean, it's, you know, you need to evaluate superintendent and provide that to the public. That's, that's why I like it. We were gonna talk about possibly have OSBA maybe work on and process for that.
Yeah. Yeah, just for our rate, the rating scale. Yeah, so that we're more in line with OSBA's rating system.
Right.
But I think that that's separate, probably. Yeah, no?
Well, I think it's, I think, I agree. I think that's probably somewhat separate. The question here, because it's in the contract, is do we want to continue to do it? And if so, do we want to put clarity around it so that we don't get? It says the board shall prepare. One of the questions that came was, well, did the board prepare, did the board chair prepare? And if it's gonna be the board chair, should it say the board chair shall prepare?
Oh.
You sort of say, that was one of the questions that was asked.
Well, it was combo thing, is what it was. I mean, I summarize, I mean.
Exactly. No, I know how it worked, but I think the public didn't know how it worked.
Okay.
And it, it's unclear, and so we were asked.
I agree. If we're gonna do the same process, I would be in favor of considering the, putting the chair, inserting the word chair in that.
Yeah, sure. Everybody in agreement with that? On the phone, you agree with that?
Could you repeat that?
The statement that I made was, should we insert the word chair after board? So agreed, the board chair shall prepare a written document for public disclosure which accurately reflects the character of the superintendent's evaluation. There was some question about that recently, so I wanted to clarify that.
I think I'm fine with that, but I wonder, shouldn't, shouldn't the board have an opportunity to read that, that summary and then approve it? Should they, should they vote on it and approve it as, as part of that process?
I would certainly support that.
Because a board chair could characterize it in a way that perhaps, you know, without intention, maybe doesn't reflect the board's, the board's consensus on that. And I just wonder if that's a, a good next step.
My question on that would be, does that have to happen in executive session?
It would have to, I'm sure.
So that would have to, that would add, and, so there would be an executive session where the board talks to the superintendent about their individual evaluations, and then the next time the board meets in executive session, they would have to have a discussion about the summary. And then if this, yeah, and then that would probably have to be edited potentially based on the feedback, and it would be another.
It would, it could create a problem.
It seems like, it seems like the process, I don't know what the process would look like on that, and so that's what I would be concerned about.
I think that an idea that you had before that you guys, I don't know, you guys must have talked about OSBA helping to guide us with this. That might be a good idea to get their input on it, to see if they might have a leaner way of, of doing that, but also accomplishing the goal that we want to do.
I like that word leaner.
Right.
That's great.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, you know, the, the process we use and the process that the OSBA was talking about, both of them have a way of quantifying it.
Right.
And part of the process we had right now, it's, it's quantifiable. Everybody gives their numbers, you average them up. There's no debate in that. The numbers are the numbers.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and that's, that's not debatable. And then I think that, you know, we can prepare something, we can agree on it, we can argue about a written summation, but I think that's the board chair's prerogative. And if, and if, I mean, that, that's, that's the job of the board chair, is just to do their best, and, and I think that's why we elect a board chair, to just speak for the board. Otherwise, we're gonna have executive session after executive session, trying to argue and, and wordsmith it to something we can have a consensus on. I think that's the, you know, the, the number portion of that evaluation are gonna speak for themselves.
They're objective.
They're very objective and they're measurable. And, and the summation is.
Well, I've gone through it once.
Leave it up to the board.
I've gone through this process once. I thought your summary was accurate and reflected, just, I'll say for the record. So I think, I tend to agree that to simplify this process, I would trust the board chair, whether it be me or whoever, to do that. And I guess if there is a problem, maybe we revisit this in future?
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that would be my recommendation, Janet.
Sure. And that, the, what we're kind of talking about doesn't necessarily, if we are going to do something like that, we might want to develop the policy and procedure around it, and not make the contract the keeper of the process.
Exactly. I totally agree with that. Okay, so I do think we'll insert the word chair for clarity.
Okay. I have one more comment before you move on to the paragraph. In line two, it says, "The evaluation shall be made in reference to the position description of superintendent, and goals and objectives shall be established for the superintendent for the year in question." So that reads to me that the evaluation is not based on what the goals and objectives were set out to be. The evaluation is based on the position description.
So I read it as both, so both the position description and the goals and objectives, but I agree it's worded poorly, so...
Well, the comma, I think the comma is, confuses, I, I would agree with Janet that the comma makes it seem like it's only based on the position description.
I think it's a great catch, because I suspect the intent was that it mean that it's both, but I totally agree with you.
So take the comma out and make it in...
And/or just reword the sentence. It's sort of wordy.
Right, but even, even shall be established, you know, you could be setting them, you're not setting them today.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think this is poorly worded. I suspect we need to take a stab at wordsmithing on it.
Okay. Board chair, we're kind of losing sight of our focus here. Let's stay focused on what we got to do.
Or what, what, what would that be?
Well, what is our meeting for tonight?
At the moment, it's to go over the contract to make sure that we have one ready for legal review in time to negotiate and sign with an interim superintendent in about three weeks.
Yeah, this is an interim superintendent. So this stuff can be talked about at a later date for when we go to hire a full-time superintendent.
I think there's a, there's merit to that. I mean, a lot of this stuff, I think we still have to have in here, but you're right. I mean, we, we could, some of this could be, you know, pulled and discussed later.
Yeah. Good comments, just that I think we're losing track here.
I think some of the next sections may go a little faster. Anything else on section five? Under expense reimbursement, essentially, we'll reimburse for actual and necessary expenses incurred within the scope of their employment. It lists a whole litany of things those might include. I, I'm guessing, just scanning it, I mean, I don't, I don't have any issue with the list nor the intent, so I don't know if anybody else does. Right, boilerplate, okay. Renewal, that one will be specific to the interim, so it will be for a one-year, well, not even a one-year period, to end on June 30, 2020. Does everybody agree that's appropriate? And, I mean, we have to talk about termination, not that we hope that's even a discussion point, but it has to be in the contract, even for an interim. So there's two ways in which the superintendent may terminate their employment under this contract. One is by the superintendent. Do we want to have, I mean, I guess we probably have to have an out for the superintendent should they wish to quit. I would hate to have to lose an interim superintendent, but...
Right.
So basically, they may terminate their employment, well, I'm not sure this applies, you know, so the, the way this is written is for a permanent superintendent who would give notice by April 15 of the year in contract year in question. I'm just curious, I mean, for an interim, I, I don't know if this is an OSBA question I can even ask, but is, for an interim, wouldn't it just be a one-year contract? There wouldn't be an out? I mean, I don't know, I...
I sort of feel that, I feel that contacting OSBA, and again, speaking with the attorney about the contract, and saying this is the parameters in which we're working with, do we keep it in? Do we adjust it? I, I think it might be a possibility to do, I think it'd be a healthy one, actually, since we're talking about contracts.
OSBA twice has said that they don't really weigh it.
Oh, they want to, yeah. So this, this would be, go.
This is our attorney.
This would be an attorney question. Does, does the superintendent, regardless of interim or other status, need a, an out because of that last part, or an agreement with the board? So my, my guess is, is that is probably something that the attorney is going to say you need in there.
I would guess.
So...
The April 15 part seemed like it would only apply to a renewal process.
Right, right.
Right. Lisa can probably knows what verbiage needs to be in there.
Take that.
Okay. Okay, so the part that would be by the district. The district may terminate this employment contract prior to its termination date without the superintendent's written concurrence, provided the district has good and just cause. It goes into what that is. Prior to termination, the superintendent shall be entitled to a written statement of grounds. I mean, all of this seems like, yes, of course, we would have to do all of these things. I don't have any concerns. Okay. Last two sections, again, probably pretty quick. Professional liability. I'm guessing that's almost boilerplate. It reads as boilerplate.
It does, yeah.
And applicable law reads as boilerplate as well.
I guess my question is, how are we going to proceed with, I think it's clear that we need an attorney to review and give us help, so how are we going to proceed on that?
What I recommend is that I take the notes that I took. I put together a, a list of them. I'll send it out. You guys can reply to me specifically if you think I've missed something. We'll have it for your records. And then I will work with, I'll contact Lisa to try to find out when she could meet to review some of the questions that we had, at which point we will float a draft, and I guess we'll have to review options if there are concerns with that at a future meeting in public.
That's a side, great plan.
I mean, I, I think we captured most of, most of the questions.
I think we did.
And I, and I think we, I think, I, I think we, you know, we captured kind of what we want to say, we just need the lawyer to say it properly.
Correct, yeah.
So, so I don't really see any, it should be pretty straightforward.
Okay. So that's, that'll be an action item that I will take, and I will send out my, my notes to you guys.
I'm glad we, I think it's great to be there.
Good exercise.
Okay, Sarah, is there, is there anything else that we ought to be talking about that I'm, we're not thinking about?
No, you guys did a great job. You're right on track. Took out a lot of work ahead of you, but it'll be good. So we'll meet back, oh, go ahead.
So we're not supposed to talk to each other about any of the candidates? I've already made that mistake. I already said something here, so that's something to, to just remember. Zip-a-the-lip-a.
Right, but we're in executive session, especially next week when we meet and we're deliberating. There will be opportunities to have conversations as a board, but my initial understanding of your question was outside of here, not talking to board members about any candidates.
But in executive session, it's...
It depends on what it is and when it is, but there, there will be an opportunity for that. So, yeah, just know that. So our next meeting is on the 24th at 5:00 PM. Please bring all of your materials, and I may or may not have said this previously, keep all of your materials. At the very end, I will collect everything, every shred of paper you've written a note on, everything in your folder, and especially your jump drive, that will all come back to me at the end. So unless there are any questions...
Yeah, quick ones. These are, so we're submitting this, and you'll summarize the ratings and everything that we do?
I will summarize what everyone submits to on the survey.
Okay. Are those going to be anonymous, or are we going to identify?
They will be anonymous, except that I will have two reports that are separated by board member only, screening committee member only, and then a combination of everyone's together.
That's the only identifying thing we have.
Yes.
So that's our homework. We come back with those completed.
Come back with these two out.
Yep, you come back having submitted your rankings via Survey Monkey. You bring all your paperwork with you. That is your task.
So we do the hard copy, but then we transfer to the online option, or online survey?
Essentially, by indicating which candidate you want as 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. And you do have to rank 10. There's no opportunity to skip one, you know, I don't know who my fifth is, but I would say this person's my sixth. Yeah, you gotta put a fifth in order to complete. And if you have any questions during the process, please feel free to email me, and if I don't get back to you immediately, just know that I will. Just got a busy weekend.
Several of us.
Okay, yeah.
Are we in this room on the 24th?
Yes, yes. Okay, any other questions or issues from board members? All right, with that, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, y'all.
Everyone, thank you.